Okay, good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order. This is the School Board Committee of the Whole for June 7th at 6 o'clock. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano. Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Fleck.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. So with that, we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have anybody to ... We're going to go solo on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
It's kind of good because I'm terrible at the questions for the youngsters that help us. And since I moved over to here, I can finally see the whole flag. I was standing behind some really tall people before. Okay. Onto student recognition by the board. Mr. Ari.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jake Litchfield, our principal from Heinemann Middle School, and he'll introduce his coach and his team.
Thank you, Terry. Prior to recognizing Ally Panzlo for her state track accomplishment, Terry said I could share with you guys a mailing from IESA that came in the middle of May. So this was to the Heinemann administration. It says, "Congratulations. In addition to having no ejections or reports of unsportsmanlike conduct this school year, your school was selected by your peers as your Division Sportsmanship Award winner. The Division Sportsmanship Award was created to recognize outstanding behavior of a member school in each of the 15 IESA divisions, and member schools from each of those divisions voted this month. Good sportsmanship is one of the primary purposes of junior high school interscholastic activities programs. We appreciate your school for promoting, teaching, and enforcing the highest standards of sportsmanship to your school community. This recognition is evidence that other schools competing against your school have found that you have displayed high levels of sportsmanship. Thank you for being role models for students, coaches, and fans alike. Congratulations on your school's excellent display of sportsmanship all year long. Keep up the great work." From the Assistant Executive Director, Leslie Appitow, at IESA. And it came with a certificate that we have displayed in our office. We had the 2015-16 recognition also, so two years in a row. And, sorry, 2016-17. So two years in a row, two banners in the gym, and I reached out to IESA for a little additional explanation. They said it is your competitors voting for this, the referees, like when those boys went to that state basketball tournament, then the referees have a say in this also, and then officials through, like, state track and stuff like that. So, recognized by other people for Heinemann's good sportsmanship. I want to share that with you guys. Coach Katie McChrystal is going to provide some details about Ally Panzlo.
Hello. I want to introduce Ally Panzlo. Come on up here, Ally. You can sit right here. Ally is a seventh grader at Heinemann, and this year she placed third in the discus. A little background on Ally. Last year as a sixth grader, she kind of emerged as one of our lead throwers. As a sixth grader, she was able to throw well enough that she was moved up onto the seventh grade team to compete at the IESA level as well. At sectionals last year, she placed second as a sixth grader on the seventh grade team. And when she went to state, she placed 38th. A little background on that, last year's weather was horrible on the first day. And we can probably remember, it was about 45 degrees and raining, so it was her taste of what competition was all like on a very big, large scale in the cold rain. So this year, when the season started, she had some goals, and she came in and she was throwing really, really well again. At sectionals, she threw 87 feet and 3 inches to place second. She went on to conference, and the conference meet is all grade levels. We just bring one group of girls. She placed first out of all of the girls in the conference as well with a throw of 87-10. And then that following weekend, we went down to state. And the cool thing about Ally is that she's always up for anything. She's very easygoing. She's very coachable. And she threw in the regulation heat, and she got into the finals. And so there was a conversation that happened between the throws coach and Ally and kind of said, "Hey, you've kind of maxed out on your power throw. Why don't you try a spin?" She then went into the finals and just kind of tried to spin and threw about 10 feet farther, and she secured a third-place spot for that with a throw of 92 feet and 7 and 1/2 inches. So, pretty impressed, pretty incredible thrower. We can't wait to see what she is going to do next year. So this is Ally Panzlo.
Okay, and now we will have the IESA State Track Meet from Marlowe Middle School. Ms. Castens? Here we are.
Good evening. My name is Rita Casten. I'm the Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Marlowe Middle School. Oh, no.
Sorry. Rita Casten's the Assistant Principal and Athletic Director at Marlowe Middle School. And I have our head girls, or I'm sorry, our head boys track coach here, Jennifer Garza. She's going to be talking about two different boys relay teams that we had place in the state meet this year. So actually, Ms. Casten's had it correct the first time. I'm the girls' head coach. The boys' head coach is currently in Ireland, so I'm doing her a huge favor. Coach Oidel would love to be here with you guys tonight, but I get the pleasure. So we have in front of you eighth grade, two relays, but four of the boys ended up on both relays. So we had a great season. Where are you? Jake Leonard, Speedy Gonzalez, he broke the 100-meter school record held by Brad Walker. Both of these relay teams worked very hard together at practice. They would come out on Focus Fridays when it was an optional practice time, working on their handoffs. I had the pleasure of watching the four-by-two at state, and it honestly looked like one runner. It was flawless. They grew as athletes, they grew as young men, and I'm really, really looking forward to seeing them grow and continue to mature on at Huntley High School. So I give you Zach Stewart, Anthony Lourenzo, Evan Grunwald, Jake Leonard, Emmanuel Tenajaro, and Eddie Diaz. So congratulations. They took fifth in both relays at state.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Okay, there being none, we will move on to the next item, which is revision and adoption of the agenda. I've always seen Don do this, so bear with me while I figure out exactly if we have to ask, is there any revisions on the agenda? Anybody doesn't have a report or anything? That being, there being none, thank you all for coming. Former president always used to say, "You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting" as well, so I guess I'll continue that tradition. You all have a great summer.
Yeah.
All right. We will, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Mr. Troy. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Then we're on to curriculum and instruction. I'll turn it over to Mr. Garin.
Thank you, President Fleck. 6.1 is the International Field Trip to Rome and Athens. Dr. Schlichter.
It's that time of year when we look at approving our next international field trip. This one would be for spring of 2020. It's to Rome and Athens, and that does align with our longer-term plan that the board has seen. I just want to say, I think it's a great thing the high school's going to continue to give these type of opportunities to students. So fairly standard packet like we normally see for these trips. And with that, I would ask that we move it forward for approval, but first would take any questions.
Anybody? Nope. Questions? Just offer to be a chaperone again.
I know, they get more and more interesting, don't they? Need a lot of chaperones on that one.
Yeah. All right, then I recommend we'll move that to the regular meeting, and we'll move on to 6.2, the report card adjustment, third to fifth grades. It's Dr. Schlichter.
Thank you. This is actually just an update for the board. So at the request of our, really our intermediate principals, as well as quite a few of our staff through the curriculum committee, we are going to be looking at shifting just slightly our reporting method for our third through fifth grade report cards. So currently, our third through fifth grade report cards include reporting on the standards and letter grades. That is a fairly, I'm going to say outdated, practice to include letter grades at the elementary level. Usually, that standards piece is the more forward-thinking component, which we're happy we have. The letter grades have just kind of persisted at the third through fifth grade level. So we're making the recommendation to remove those letter grades and then to continue with the standards. That will bring the report cards in line with where they are K-2. It will also bring our literacy and math components for grades three through five in line with the rest of the third through fifth grade report card. And truly, this change is part of that larger shift towards making sure we're focusing on the standards. I know the board has heard us talk about that before. We really don't need our third grade students distracted by whether it was a letter grade, a percentage, those types of things we know even from the competency pilot presentation that we saw sometimes don't tell us as much about learning as the standards, and so we believe this would be a positive shift. The teachers are aware that this is being recommended. We would be informing parents. Clearly, the report card doesn't come out till the end of first trimester, so this isn't an immediate change for tomorrow, but it would be for next year. We would be informing parents through curriculum night, putting in place support so that they understand that shift, and then just making sure in fifth grade that students do understand what that shift towards grades would look like moving into sixth grade. We see this as a fairly small tweak, and it really, I think, would bring us more in line with best-practice report cards for the elementary level. So with that, I would take any questions at all, and we do have some of the folks here who made that recommendation. Ms. Lombard was also a part of it, as well as some of the curriculum directors, so we're happy to take any questions.
Questions from the board?
Is there such a thing as like the most common counterargument? Thinking through it, it feels like a change, and I guess I'm generally in alignment with it, but just trying to understand what's the downside or what's the counterargument?
Great question. I'm glad you asked that. The most common counterargument is that people might think, "Well, we need to give grades to these kids so that they feel more ready for middle school, so that they're used to getting a grade," if that makes sense. I think that's that idea that we can equate grades with achievement, and so part of it for us is really shifting that conversation towards grades should not be separate on achievement from learning, and learning is around the standards. It is going to be important for us to be clear in communication with kids. What we have found is across districts, and we've worked with them, I've worked in districts where this change has happened before, there's no really substantive difference for kids moving into sixth grade. We just make sure that they understand what this type of work might mean if you were getting a grade on it, but we don't have to be distracted when we're nine years old about whether we have a B or an A or that kind of thing.
Right.
It's a fair question, though, because that's typically the main downside. It's more of a communication concern than it is a learning concern. So we would need to pay attention to that component.
Any other questions? All right, and we will move on to number seven, the Policy Committee.
Okay, Policy Committee, thank you. 7.1, we have a press update, May and June of 2018. Mr. Ari, do you have anything to add?
I would be happy to.
Okay.
There's actually 13 policies here, but to break this down very, very simply, they're in four categories. One is the policy is totally unchanged, but there's a footnote change, so not a major issue. The other one is the policy's unchanged, but there's a mild style change, again, a non-issue. There's a policy and legal reference change, which we need to adopt, and it also has a best-practice recommendation, and we are in compliance with that best-practice recommendation. So again, that is something that we can move forward with. The only new policy on here is 6135, and that is for accelerated procedures, and that's one thing that we are really ahead of the curve on here in District 158 is we have had acceleration procedures in place for over a decade. So we are totally in compliance with this policy already. So there's nothing that needs to be done for any of them, and with our new policy, we are in total compliance. So with that being said, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
On the, I know we've been in compliance with that accelerated placement program, but we'll need to adopt this to comply with the change, the current bill that got passed, right?
Yes.
Any other? Go ahead.
I had a minor question on 6:60. There was about curriculum content.
Mm-hmm.
And they added the unit on cursive. What does a unit look like?
Go ahead.
So they don't define a unit. They leave that up to the school districts, and so for us, what that means is that we have been mapping out and making the decision about what that looks like for students, what style. There's different styles of cursive. It can be a large discussion in some districts.
Right.
We have it fairly seamlessly integrated, and so the unit really looks more like incorporating it throughout the school year in small chunks. I think it makes sense that way.
Okay.
Because the state doesn't tell us what a unit has to be. Thanks for asking that.
That's why I was curious, right. They made a big deal about including it, but they didn't give you any kind of direction beyond that.
Absolutely.
So I wanted to make sure that the unit didn't turn out to be one week long?
No, absolutely not, because that doesn't make sense to learn writing. That way, it's really more of a functional skill, so yeah, that's going to be incorporated.
Okay.
So it'll be more than learning square dancing?
Correct.
Just remember that, having one unit of square dancing.
Yeah, that one square dance unit, yeah.
I used to love teaching that.
I used to love having nightmares about that one, so thank you.
I'm sorry, did that come out?
Did you really do that? That was one of the other? So.
That wasn't on the list.
Wasn't on the list.
I'll be glad to see the cursive license gets continued. I don't remember the teacher that did that, but there was a teacher that gave out cursive licenses to kids the way driver's licenses are handed out to adults. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move that forward, and we'll go on to Finance Committee.
Finance. 8.1, we have our purchase orders and press checks, disbursements, and payables there. Any questions, concerns about those items?
Nope.
We'll move those forward to the board. 8.2 is our revenue and expenditure report. Sal, you're substituting.
I am.
Upgrades.
Just have a.
It is an upgrade.
Thank you. Just a few comments. Looking at the executive summary, it's reflecting activity through the end of April. The fiscal year budget column is still showing our original budget since the amended budget first took place in May. But just looking at things overall, expenditures and revenues are tracking within budget. The only outlier there is capital outlay, that I'm sure most of you have seen. We have quite a few large projects going on right now. Thank you, Doug. So we'll see those expenditures start to come in. On the second page, there was a little bit of discussion last month on the high health insurance claims for March. And at that time, the first few weeks in April had come in quite high, but that seemed to level off towards the end of the month. So they ended up with total claims for the month at 594,000.
Yeah.
And we do have our May, all of our May claims in, and it did go up again a little bit this month, is 667. But even still, we are tracking within budget for our health insurance. And then looking at the dashboard, again, the budget is still reflecting the original budget. So most of those items that are in the red were involved or had an amended budget passed. So the May dashboard is going to better reflect what our actuals are to budget. And that's about all I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. I personally don't have any questions. Does anybody else have any questions concerning this report?
None here.
Yeah, now we look like things are looking good there, so good. Okay, move on to 8.3, fiscal reports. Anything in your monthly fiscal update to note?
Just a couple of things. I think Mark mentioned last month that ISBE had been in, and we're going to be getting 59,000 back due to an adjustment. I had a call into ISBE to find out how we're going to get that money back, but I haven't received an answer yet. Our regular auditors with Evans, Marshall, and Pease were here yesterday and today for some preliminary work. I didn't see much of them. That's always good.
Yeah.
They left early this.
They weren't asking questions.
No, no, left early this afternoon, saying to be back in August. So I think we're good there.
Okay, good. Yeah, we'll deal with the solar contract on a different section. Yeah, okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Or comments on that? Okay. We have our activity report. Any questions or concerns on the activity fund report? Okay, if not, we'll move to 8.4, which is revenue contracts. We have, I believe, a contract. We do for Cheswick, art to remember. Any questions or concerns about that? Not, we will move that forward to the board for approval. Item 8.5 is the prevailing wage act resolution. This is an annual item, correct, that we, you know, we just need to follow the law. So I'm presuming everybody's okay with that part of it. So that'll move forward to the board.
Good idea.
It's always a good idea. Yeah. Follow the law.
Do the annual commentary about it first and then say, "Yeah, we'll do it."
Yeah, exactly. 8.6 is the. Eight dot six is the designation of depositories. Again, there's a list. Is there any issues with who is on that list? There's five banks listed, or five institutions listed, they're not all banks.
Nothing's changed.
Yep, nope. Okay, if not, we'll move that forward to the board. Eight dot seven, signatories for the bank accounts. We have, I'm sure Mr. Altmeier's on there, and Dr. O. Welcome to the world of being responsible and signing checks. You already, you already got it, already got it worked out there in the signature block? Okay, good deal. All right, we'll move that forward to the board for approval. Eight dot eight, notice of appointment of treasurer, treasurer's bond. Again, any questions or concerns about that? Nope. Okay, everything's still all good. We'll move that forward to the board. Eight dot nine, equipment declared as surplus. There is probably a long list of all kinds of fine...
No over, over...
No over protectors. We finally have gotten through that. So any questions or concerns about what's on that list? No. Okay. We'll move that forward to the board. Eight dot ten, national school lunch rate increase. I believe we're increasing it a nickel. We are. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Probably just an important note to say it's basically mandatory, so it's not like a discretionary price increase.
Right. So...
More compliance with the law, right?
That's right. Right, and then there's also a little blurb on the tiered pricing that we have. It says the admin is not recommending a change to the tiered pricing program that we have, so everybody's good with that, too, as part of this. Okay. Very good. We'll move that forward to the board. Eight dot eleven, hazardous busing resolution. Of course, that is an annual item that we basically transport everyone. We say everyone is within a hazardous situation so that we get required to bus everyone. So any questions or concerns about that?
Just from a, from a, I guess, legal perspective, has there been any chatter or potential with all the changes in like funding models and such that this process would change at all? I don't know who that's directed to.
No, that's actually a good question. I don't know if Debbie, if you know anything about that, because yeah, they did write the change to how transportation is dealt with.
Transportation is still part of the MCATs. It did not roll into the evidence they started.
Okay, so it's its own separate, and it didn't change that.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I'm not that worried about it.
All right.
Okay. All right, that's finance, we're on the HR.
All right, item, first item up is item nine dot one, salary rate change recommendation for non-union employees. I think it's a consistent process to what we've done previously, but Mr. Azair, anything to add?
Yeah, I want to speak to this a little bit. We're going to get some legal advice on this. We do have some new legislation coming through that is changing the pension spiking, I guess is the term. I don't know if that's a technical term, but that's the term that's out there that used to be six percent, is now decreasing to three percent. We need to get some legal counsel on some of this that would impact folks that were within that retirement window, and this three point five may not pertain to them at the end of the day. So that is something that is new here within the last couple of days, so we'll have an update at the board meeting on that. So in terms of going to consent with this, we probably need to hold off on that at this time.
And then presumably the remedy, I mean, I guess, to be determined, but presumably the remedy would be holding out any individual impacted in that range.
Presumably, yes.
You know who they are.
Yes. It's a discussion we can definitely have.
It's the guidance. Okay. All right, well, I guess...
Yeah, Leslie, as a comment, related to the law change.
Well, I just, I have a ruling because we had a lot of questions about that, Adam, so I'll forward you this email that clarifies it for you.
Awesome, thanks, I appreciate it.
All right, anything else on nine dot one?
Just one more thing on nine dot one there. In terms of, you know, this overall recommendation, I did put a line in here. If we've got some multi-year contracts that have been agreed upon, or we have any market adjustments that may come about, those will appear at the board meeting to be acted on, the individual contracts, or on the personnel report for a market adjustment if that would take place.
Right.
So I wanted to make sure that that was noted, and those contracts and individual market adjustments would not get rolled up in this memo.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess, hold on nine dot one pending further changes for the next meeting. And then nine dot two, monthly HR report, anything to highlight?
Yeah, just the monthly HR report here. Business as usual, and HR actually extremely busy right now, getting ready for summer school, making sure we have all those teachers in place to get going, and they've gone through all the human resource processes, and obviously filling some open positions that we have. Have some positions continue to come open, but we're getting out on the recruiting trail and getting those posted at this time. I do have just a brief update on workman's comp rates, and we're going to give another update at the board meeting on this. Debbie, unless you've got any news on it from Mark, but it usually comes to you at this committee or the whole. You know, one of the highlights here is our experience modification factor. It's something we want to see at one point oh. It has decreased, but we've had some actuarial credit out there that we're credited in the past couple of years, but we are seeing an overall significant increase of fifteen point three three percent. But Mark is diving into that a little bit to explain an update at a later time, but just wanted to make the board aware of it at this time.
Yeah, I wasn't sure I was reading, understanding the flow of the paragraph there, because it says it's decreased to four ninety-one, but then increased.
Yeah, so you're looking at a modified premium there that's gone down, and then the overall program contribution is a different number at the end of the day. So like I said, we're looking into that a little bit closer, so we have a better understanding of what's going on, so we'll definitely have an update at the next board meeting.
So what's that, that's basically saying, just from the verbiage on there, it's basically saying the base premium went down.
Right.
But the absence of the actuarial credit year over year just made the absolute dollar amount go up.
Correct. So like I said...
Also, because payroll increased.
Correct, yeah.
It just brought payroll, yeah.
Yeah. So like I said, we're diving into that, you know, make sure everything's correct, which we assume it is, but we want to give a thorough explanation for it at the end of the day, too. So wanted to make sure it was in this update, though, so we can follow up on it at the next board meeting.
Okay. All right, anything else on nine point two?
That's it for nine point two.
All right, and then nine point three, new position, job description?
Yeah, we got a new position here. We've discussed a little bit with the board, a behavioral special strategist position, and a very detailed job description here, put together by our directors of special education. You know, looking to post a position, and essentially, in a nutshell here, bring in someone who can provide some very unique services to our teachers in training.
Any questions?
No.
If not, I will pass it to building and grounds, Mr. Troy.
Thank you. Item ten dot one, O and M updates. Anything to highlight on there, Mr. Runcasik?
Just like some more electricity procurement...
Sorry, thank you.
Our electricity procurement positions expire in December, and December meter reads, so we'll have to look at that. We've been stalling because of the consideration of the solar initiative here. Construction has started. McCabean School is well underway with replacing its shingle roof. Heinemann School has commenced its refresteration. Chesek and Martin, if you haven't driven over there in the last week, it's, looks like a war zone in the parking lot.
Yeah.
It's going to get worse before it gets better, but we left a little bit open for kindergarten registration, which I visited today. Hadn't had any calls until about two o'clock of any concerns, but at two o'clock, I got a call, apparently, or one thirty, that a backhoe that was putting a storm saw in between Reed Road and the building happened to snag our primary fiber line from outside, off the campus to the campus. Mr. Bazinski beat me there, that stinker. And we, he just told me that it would seem at that point that everything was magically still working, we just maybe nicked the cable, but it's not a pleasant orientation, and not probably not desirable, but unfortunately, I mean, or fortunately for us, this is not the school district-owned fiber, and the contractor was required to call the utility locate service, who should have located this line, and they did not. I was just told on a phone call about thirty minutes ago that they asked the guy if they could record it, the locate guy, because he admitted on the site that he missed it. So that means that the locate service has to pay whatever is required from Comcast to fix the fiber. I don't know who will get the call first. I've asked my people to tell me what they know about what Comcast is going to do. I'm sure Chris is going to have the same, but if they have to do a shutdown, there'll be a little impact to some of my infrastructure and a lot of the things that Chris manages to get it fixed, but it's apparently fixable.
Are we the only one on that cable, or is that...
Yes.
It's on a feed.
This is our campus feed. It's the feed that goes from, into the district campus there, from the grid out there, if you will, if that's what you call it in tech world, I don't know. Other than that, that job's going fairly well. No real big bumps in the road.
Well, good, but...
Yeah. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. It's busy times ahead for this department with everything going on with the custodial contract initiative transition. I'm sorry, I should mention that. The custodial contract service transition is effective July one. Have conversations with a decommissioning plan, if you will, for our present service. Our new service has actually already had kickoff meetings with us. The procurement for equipment is already in place next week, we should start receiving, and we found a secure place for their new equipment that they're bringing in. We're making some other transitions to prepare. Our custodial service tonight is having their third job fair, where they've invited anyone to apply and encouraged existing employees in the Alpha Team to apply to work for them on the district property for the future. And some of the management, I've heard, have had some verbal offers, so that it shouldn't be that, there shouldn't be that big of a transition from a management's perspective and operational perspective, it would seem, except for the expected improvement we achieve by way of all the requirements we put in the bid spec, so that are just things we added value to. So be happy to answer any questions about this.
All right, any questions on the report? All right, thank you for the report. Ten dot two, keyless entryway enhancements?
This is something that I know Mr. Dean has been working on very hard, and I think he should be the one to speak to this, please.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Hawke, just want to take a few minutes of your time to make a recommendation for approval for our new keyless entry system enhancement. What you guys have in front of you, just to give you a little background of what we have right now. In two thousand and five, Honeywell was awarded the contract to install the present keyless entry system. Honeywell is a proprietary company. And in two thousand and thirteen, we did a proposal for the system upgrade of the software, and now we are starting to experience some difficulty, some breakdown of the system. Twenty-three of our controllers, which are the backbone of the system, are obsolete, and they're breaking down. As you can see in here in FY sixteen, we spent a good amount of money in servicing what we currently have. And again, it is a proprietary system, so only Honeywell is able to go ahead and do what they need to do to it. So we thought it was a good time to go out and do an RFP, which was a long process. I learned a lot. This is my first one that I've been through. Mr. Runcasik has taught me very well, as much as I could know at this time, and like I said, it was a long process. So the RFP went out on May seventh, and we received three proposals on May thirtieth. As you can see in the attachment of what those three proposals were, it is a significant amount of money, okay? And the reason being is there's a lot of cable that go to over two hundred of our card readers that we are going to be replacing at this time, as well as the software, to an open source type of a company that we have that we're looking into. So which gives us a lot of options. And this is only to get us back up to where we need to be, okay? We're not adding anything new, no new card readers, no new bells and whistles that we want to have, but it does open the doors for that opportunity for us in the future. So again, at this time, we're looking to make a recommendation for board approval of the four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and five hundred, or sorry, four hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Yeah, and the life of this system is anticipated to be what?
The life of our current system or the new system?
No, the new system that we would be getting.
She's Doug, Doug, do you know?
Well, I'm kind of going to lean on Mr. Bazinski a little bit, but it's technology, so, you know, and technology lifecycle, he's more intimately involved in where, than I am.
So one of the nice things about this system being built on open standards is all of the other manufacturers out there make equipment that work with the system. In terms of the different parts of the system, if you look at the cabling, you're talking probably twenty-five years, which truly the cabling is probably about half of this total contract.
And our existing cabling doesn't, is not, you can't use it because...
The existing cabling, it's called, it would be referred to as like a loop bus system, so if there's a break in the cable anywhere, all the other card readers, the entire section of that building, don't work.
Right.
So this replaces that with a single run to each door. So if there's a break in the system, a single door goes down.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a significant improvement in that regard. In terms of expected life of the controllers, I wouldn't expect anything less than twelve to fifteen years, just like we've seen out of the existing system.
Right.
And that's for the controllers. The one thing we did put into here specifically is a maintenance contract or a software assurance contract to make sure that our software is staying up to date also. And that's one area where the Honeywell system has kind of been lacking in terms of keeping current with the software. So part of this contract is also to ensure that we're staying up on the current software from year to year, rather than falling four or five years behind on software.
And that's inclusive in this price we're seeing?
That is inclusive in the price that you see, yes.
Thanks.
I got a question for Dr. Bazinski.
Sure.
Going back to this two thousand and thirteen, the up, the system upgrade, was there, was there any warranties or guarantees that we got with that, and that was five years ago? Should this have lasted longer, or...
That upgrade was an upgrade because our server was failing, and the present version of their system didn't operate on the new server operating platform, so they had to put patches in and upgrade their software to a totally different version that required us to invest in that, and that's part of that OEM kind of a model.
Right. From what I understand, that upgrade happened literally like the month I started here. And from what I understand, it was primarily a software update, so to be talking about software that was installed five years ago, doesn't surprise me that it's out of date at this point, which is another reason why we've put in a software assurance program.
Okay, so we, I guess my question is, do you think we got our money's worth out of that from five years ago?
Oh, yeah, I would say absolutely.
If I remember correctly, that was like thirty-four thousand dollars for a software update, which is...
Okay. I'm sorry, how much was, did you say?
Thirty-four.
Something like thirty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so you have, all these other proposals are all within a very small, relevant range, and they're all a hundred thousand dollars above who you're wanting to, us to take, which is great that they're saving us all this money. Are they a responsible bidder? Are they, we think, I mean, why are they, why are they a hundred thousand dollars?
I'll take, I'll take the first, I'll take the first response of that, and feel free to jump in on this, guys. Procom has done a lot of work with the district, they're very familiar with our buildings. When you look at a project like this, and when I would estimate that roughly half of the project is in fact cabling, this company knows our cabling in the building already. They could probably tell us better than I could tell us the exact distances that cables are going to be run, so they don't have to have nearly as much guess in their response than some of these other companies to try to make sure they're not losing. Yeah, we've been doing a lot of business with Procom in terms of technology, infrastructure, cabling, that sort of stuff for many years.
So you're comfortable with these guys?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
These guys at Procom have been the contractor that's been putting cable in our buildings when we built them, and almost every building.
Yeah.
They really know it.
Just a quick question that...
Just a quick question that, oh, what year, that initial year of Honeywell? What was the expenditure that year? It was 34-ish in '13. What was the expenditure in '05?
'05, in '05, and if I have to, I can call it up on my database here. But I'm going to go, I'm a little vague, but I'll give you ballpark numbers. I was, first, I was actively involved in writing a specification back then when we had no security. The security system that went out to bid was a burglar alarm system in all buildings. Intrusion control, you call it. Keyless entry system in all the buildings and a network digital video management, security cameras. It was digital. We had three proposals. One was, had all kinds of drills for integration. It was 1.9 million. And that included the five newer buildings that were built at that time, '05. And it, it, there was a proposal from somebody in the middle that I can't remember the name of that was like 1.37 or something million. Honeywell came in with a $670,000 proposal. And one of, one of a few reasons that they were such a good price was number one, as they traditionally do, they put in what we call an OEM kind of a model where they're the only ones that can provide services, a proprietary system. And they want a service contract with their customer. And the other, the other thing that they did that the other people didn't do, I'm sure, was that they put in this, what Chris talked about, a bus loop. They sent a ton of money on cabling. And, but the trouble is it's very fault prone, you know, not as, not as active. But at that point in time, when we made a decision to work with them, we were very concerned if the, if the large referendum that had passed could fund this work at all, let alone all the other development we were doing. So price wasn't important.
No, that's helpful. I was just trying to get a gauge of, I mean, it feels like this price is actually comparable or favorable to call it the combined lifetime of Honeywell price, if you will. So, thank you.
Can you just clarify what the open source advantage is? Obviously, we know the OEM side and the Honeywell side, but what does this do on the opposite end?
The significant advantage, if you look at the tabulation sheet in front of you, all three of the companies on there responded with the same Genetec Open Standard type system. The single biggest benefit is we could actually call any of them to do service on it. And now obviously we'll have a service contract upfront with Procom to start. One of the big benefits is over time, if we need to replace single pieces of the system, we can to a certain extent pick and choose what type of controllers we put in. We don't have to just call one single manufacturer and buy their stuff. We can be much more flexible in the parts and pieces that we use in the system. If there's a new card reader that comes out that can do something new and fancy, we could likely just start using those without having to go to a specific manufacturer to get that. It's much more flexible.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Any objections with moving this forward then? All right, thank you, gentlemen. We'll go ahead and move that forward. Item 10 dot 3, the energy savings contract.
Okay, I've been spending a lot of time passing around that it's this contract between the school district's attorney, Forefront's team and attorney. And actually, we also have input from the school district's insurance plan administrator to cover the insurance, and that's why we just got that yesterday. So you have an update that was shared with you that is, I believe, on the link for you. And if, you know, I'm sure you read the first version that was posted to the notice that went out with the board packet already, but this version here has a couple of updates. There's a section 4.4, which has information in it that just documents that the school district will have real-time access of the other web to the system's performance. So we can monitor to make sure that they are maintaining the system and having it produce and provide the benefits to the school district that we expect. In addition, it has the 17.1 section updates with all the insurance requirements. And Forefront has been very cooperative. I will tell you that Christina has joined us. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name, but if you have questions, I know that they wanted to have a member of their team here to be sure that they could help answer any questions. I think they've been very fair about this negotiation. I, I feel that this is a very fair agreement. I know we talked about it, you had a red line version a few weeks ago. And this is all cleaned up. We've got the three campus versions in here. I know some of you are very detail oriented, looking at these things. You may have noticed that the one sample special terms agreement, the one campus that was in the red line version has different numbers than the version here. And that is because that red line version was put out, version was put out there for us to just talk about general terms and condition language and not specific numbers to get that process going. These, this particular model is exactly what we asked for in their second run cash flow review in the evaluation process, where we asked everybody to run an 80% of our load model, which we don't want to exceed. And it is exactly that. We predict over 20 years, about a $4.2 million savings to the school district on its energy costs. And all three campus versions are here. Even there's, there are terms in here. If you go to like page 45 of this 58-page update version here of this document, you will see that there are terms and conditions for early termination if we so choose to do so. There are terms where we can actually buy the system from them. And that cannot start before year five because they're, one of the reasons that this is such a good value to the school district is because the investors that are putting this in are gaining incentives and tax advantages in the first five years. In addition, there are numbers down there about our estimated annual production. And just to remind everyone, if you go to page 44, we're getting, what we're getting is for all kilowatts produced out of this system, they're provided to us at 2.6 cents, which is a really good deal compared to what we're paying right now. And like I have mentioned before, we're going to realize demand savings. They're going to make it much greater. Our demand chargers are going to go way down, which they can't guarantee, but they will go down on a month-to-month basis. Be happy to answer any questions. We'd be looking for the board to hopefully act on this in June. And by all means, I want everyone to recognize this isn't done. If we can, if we agree to this agreement, there are a lot more steps that have to take place. One being that the next thing I'm sure Forefront, they've said they've already got the paperwork ready to go, I believe, to submit the Level 2 and Level 4 studies to ComEd to get final, to get final approval that we can put a system this large on their grid and not be therefore required to pay to also invest in improvements in their infrastructure when we're reverse metering in the summer. And then we also have to go through zoning review, which we will have public hearings on and things like that. We've had preliminary conversations with some of the villages, but that'll have to get much more in-depth at this time. So this journey is not over if we want to go forward, but this would provide us an opportunity to have a partner to do that.
Are there any more iterations to come of this document?
Possibly.
If we approve this now, we approve it or forward it to the board in two weeks in its present condition. So if there's any other changes, want to kind of get a feel of what we're looking at in two weeks down the road.
You're not going to put it on consent, so it's going to be a separate item. And it is going to be an evolving, it's mostly done, but I think there's a couple other things which I'll talk about that it'll just evolve to that. And that's what we'll get, you know, off of consent to review and decide whether we're good with it or not.
No, I saw it was an actionable item tonight and not as a report. So that's why we'd be moving it forward.
Meaning, actionable meaning whether you put it on consent or put it kind of non-consent. And then I think we should, it would be my opinion.
Take it off of consent.
Take it off consent.
And that we can.
Because it's going to evolve maybe a little bit more from this point still.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from the board on this?
Yeah, if you could come on up and introduce yourself, I just have a couple of questions. Others might as well. Make sure the green light's on.
Okay, it appears to be on. So my name is Christina Sayuchek. I'm a sales director for Forefront Power. I lead our public sector energy solutions for customers in the state. And I've been working alongside the proposal lead, Rachel McLaughlin, negotiating some of the key terms of this proposal and also generating a majority of the savings analyses for the school district. So very excited to be here and answer any questions you might have about the opportunity.
Okay. And it may be in there, but I would just want to make sure we got clarification. I was thinking about this and how this would lay out. What, who maintains the grounds where these solar panels would be?
Sure, so as part of our operations and maintenance component of the offer, we provide vegetation abatement through one of our operations and maintenance partners. And so that partner will go perform those preventative cleanings and the vegetation abatement twice a year to make sure that there's no foliage in the way that would disrupt any of the usage of the panels.
Okay, and that's at your expense now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and in the proposal, there should be a full table and schedule not only detailing in very granular view what each of those maintenance activities looks like in terms of the twice-per-year preventative maintenance standards. But there's also a response timeline through which we would respond to any issues with the system.
Right, I mean, so simply put, I mean, all these things are fenced in on the ground, correct?
Correct, for safety.
So simply, you guys take care of everything inside the fence?
Correct.
Okay, and outside is us?
Yes.
Okay, is it?
That was my next question, so. Okay, good, we're tracking. Now, next question is, if, let's assume this is going swimmingly from today until we're ready to go. What's the earliest you foresee us flipping the switch or whatever it is you do?
Sure.
I'm picturing like a bug bunny.
It's just as easy as that. No, the idea would be that we ultimately start construction once the snow melts. And so the idea would be we would take that into account, so climate constraints. But then we'd also want to make sure that we're installing and staging the system in a way that makes sense for the school district because we certainly don't want to be disruptive. So we'll be working closely with Doug and other members of the Huntley team to make sure that we build out a construction schedule that makes sense for the district and minimizes any disruptions. But what we were envisioning would be likely starting construction in late May and completing construction in August. It takes about three to four months to complete the installation for a ground monitor array.
Okay, just piggybacking up, so when you're doing construction, okay, we just talked about inside fence, outside fence, but obviously you've got to get construction equipment to certain areas that have to cross our, and I'm sure some of this is heavier equipment type of stuff. So what happens to things, you know, that impact our footprint? Are you guys responsible for taking care of, you know, any of the displacement, like big tire tracks and various things, things like that? Is that all you guys take care of, all that stuff?
Yeah, so as part of the, once we get to a place of contract execution, our development team will create a detailed development and construction plan set for you. So there will be a kickoff meeting. And within that plan set, there will be a detailed schematics of what the staging process will look like. And that'll answer a lot of the questions as to what you may have in terms of where equipment will be stored, how we plan on transporting the equipment into the, into each of the campuses. And the idea for that would be, it'd be a collaborative approach to ensure that we minimize disruption in that way. And we use the various access roads and such and develop them in a way that makes sense for the district.
I had asked that there be language put in here somewhere that talks about how their operation cannot frustrate our operation generally.
Is there concern about the length of the trenching effort, I guess, for lack of a better term, that needs to be done at the high school campus? Because of putting that array into that, the area out front, from what I saw in the schematic, you're looking at running quite a bit of lines to get to the back of the school from the array that's going to be at the front of the school. And that, that's going to be a lot of concrete and asphalt work that's going to need to be repaired in order to.
Directionally bored?
Yeah.
That stuff's directionally bored, isn't it underneath?
Correct.
Yeah, it's all directionally bored. They don't go in, they're not cutting concrete or, they might, where they come out at the junction of the district, but they're, they're going to directionally bore underground.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we worked with, we've installed panels at 320 different campuses for school districts around the country. And so we've faced many similar type of construction challenges and long AC runs and making sure we work with each of our customers to configure the system, including the wiring in a way that makes sense for the campus constraints.
Thank you.
The Board of Education and the School Board are really conscious about being good neighbors and transparent with the public. I understand Forefront has a communication plan to help Mr. Armstrong communicate out to our public related to, you know, what's going on. Can you just give us a brief overview on that?
Absolutely, so we've retained multiple consultants on the engineering, development, permitting side to not only assist with zoning and permitting activities, but also to have on-the-ground expertise in making sure that we have full community buy-in in all of the communities that we're currently planning solar development activity in. And so one of the initiatives is working with one of our consultant partners. They are able to pull landowner information, so anyone within a 10-mile radius for some of our sites that we've proposed. And certainly we can work with the district to figure out what that ideal radius looks like and to provide mailers well in advance of any solar development activity taking place, just so then we can get everyone aware of the exciting solar opportunity that Huntley is pursuing, but then also address any questions as they come along. We never want to get to a board meeting or zoning meeting through which there could be any contention or any misunderstandings or misrepresentations about the benefits of solar. We've, we're actively permitting across many counties in this state. And so through that experience, we've been able to anticipate what some of the questions might be, and we've been able to mitigate against that. And so the idea would be we would generate a proactive communications campaign to many of the adjacent neighbors and landowners in the Huntley community to make sure that we address any questions directly with anyone that might have any concerns or questions about what the merits of solar for Huntley would look like.
Does this include perhaps a public forum or open forum for people to come and talk about the project? And is that our responsibility or would that be yours to address those questions?
Yeah, so we would certainly look to the board for any recommendations as to whether you, you get a sense for whether there could be any big questions from your community. And our development team has been active in terms of staging not only Q and A sessions, but working with each of our public sector partners to create town hall type events to where we can address questions from the community, just to make sure we can proactively address any concerns and hit them early. But the idea would be that the communications campaign would roll out throughout the summer months. So we'd get ahead everything really early.
All right, great.
Just a few, I guess, contract-specific questions I had. The termination agreement, or termination fee, it's in rate terms. What's that translate to in dollars?
Sure, so it would be multiplied out by the nameplate capacity of the system.
Great.
So it would be 215 multiplied out by.
To say the numbers out loud, we'll multiply it for you.
Yeah, I believe, I believe the year one termination fee is $2.50 on a per-kilowatt basis DC. And the final DC system size that we proposed across the Huntley portfolio was 5,760-some kilowatts DC, somewhere in the vicinity. So we would multiply that value out. And that would be multiplied out by.
The 20.025 or 026 is what you.
Pardon?
According to the schedule, what year you're.
The termination value scales down over time, just due to the.
Page 45. Page 45. Forty, fifty-six. Forty-five.
And we would make sure that whatever that value you calculate, it's, it's on a watt basis, so that the kilowatt size of the system would be multiplied by 1,000.
Yeah. So what, and I apologize, you had given me, and I multiplied already, it was 50, what was it, 57, what was the number?
Yep, that's right.
Fifty-seven hundred? It's like 57.40, I thought.
Kilowatts DC.
Like 251.
Yeah, worst case, so 5.07.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's whatever, it's 14, I was getting the same number before, it was 14, 4.07, so I don't know if that translates into 14 million.
Yes.
Right, yeah, okay, so initially, it's initially.
That's for year one.
Year what?
So that, $2.47 is 14 million, basically.
There are three separate special terms for each campus. The numbers are a smidge different because it's not exactly the same model.
Right, okay.
But I just saw two of the three have 2.51 in year one, what's the, is the third one's 2.47?
Yeah.
Did you say?
So and then it gets down to about a fourth later on.
Gotcha, that's what I was looking for, just a gauge of how much.
Just, yeah, but again, it's scaled pretty high year one, so it comes down considerably.
Which makes sense.
Yeah.
I was wondering how my arithmetic skills were up here.
That's all right, you're.
And then just wanted to get a sense, again, to ballpark number of that terminal value of the equipment, is there a sense for how much that would be at the end?
Sure, so the fair market value?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would probably be closer to about $2 million or so dollars.
Okay. Okay.
And it's an equipment finance lease, right?
But it's not, I mean, it's, there, it's a, it's their equipment, we're not, we don't, they own it, we're just gaining the benefit of it and getting electricity at a guaranteed rate. It's, it's just at the end of the term, the 20-year term, it becomes, okay, something has to happen, either you agree to continue on and negotiate a rate, but we're going to talk about that, that's one of the things we're going to talk about.
Yes.
Or we got the option to buy that equipment, if I remember right, at, you mentioned at the fair market value, which it has to be appraised, but you're just estimating it's possibly around $2 million.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And a way to proxy that would be if we take the later values of that termination value, then that's a good way to gauge what we, is what we would assume the cost would look like.
Right. So, or do we just tell them to pick up the equipment and take it away?
And we get to choose based on campus, so if, if we say it's really been a pain at Harmony Road, you could take that one out and we could still keep the other two campuses, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, I did speak with Mr. Almeyer today at length about what his opinion was on, on things, and he's, he's in a pretty good place on it. They, you know, these guys is a team with, you know, they've worked really well, worked with the, you know, our attorney had, they had a person who's done this stuff, they're really satisfied with his abilities. Our consultant is a high-end consultant, right, he's highly recognized. You guys are good people to work with, so they've been working pretty well together on it. I think the one reservation that Mark or Mark still wanted to discuss was the, the end of the lease and possibly coming up with a provision that guaranteed, you know, a certain rate at the moving on after year 20. And that's one of, that's one of the.
A certain ceiling on there, right?
Yeah, no, exactly, not to exceed, a not-to-exceed-rate situation where we could continue on just doing the same thing at, you know, at a certain rate. So that part is not in there right now, correct?
Correct, it just says we'll be negotiating.
Yeah, that part's still, and that's the part I'm kind of was alluding to before that we still want to discuss with them a little bit, and that may be modified before it gets to us.
Another section that I wanted to get clarification on is Section 9.1, which is kind of labeled purchaser obligations, and it talks about taxes on, you know, basically if the government taxes your sale of energy to us, we're responsible for that? I was trying to get a sense for what, you know, has that come up before and what does that look like if it has?
Sure, so, so far in Illinois, that issue hasn't come up.
There's a way to tax it, I find it, though.
Right, and so I.
You've got your sure utility-type taxes, so go ahead.
Yeah, so I think the idea was to ensure that there was a full discussion of any applicable tax that may be placed in the system, so in the case of, say, an electricity sales tax, that the customer would bear the burden of that since you are the one that has a contract with your energy supplier and such and so, that would be one example of what that would look like. But in terms of any other types of government taxes, the only other issue I could assume would be potential change in property rate assessments?
But do those exist today or are there examples of it?
No.
Mr. Almeyer's been in discussion with the assessor for the county, and it would seem that there's, there's final review to be done from what I understand, but preliminary discussion is at this time, I don't think so. But it's kind of a new area, we're venturing into uncharted waters here.
I mean, if I'm looking at, you know, what are those risks of a very long-term contract? You know, it's very, it's a possibility that legislatively something could come in and kind of strip the economics out of this thing, and that's something external to both of us.
Doug, do we, sorry, this is an elementary question, but do we pay any tax on our, on our electrical bill now? Or are we exempt?
Yes, there are taxes on our electric bills, there's a state sales tax. We actually, it's something that I keep wanting to find time, I've mentioned our building committee chair, Paul, that I want to do is I want to enlighten you with some time when I weren't so burdened with other activities. But for example, they've invented new taxes on municipal taxes, we're paying a couple thousand dollars a month on municipal taxes.
And we're not exempt from that, even though?
No, I've, I've talked to legislatures and that how can a taxing district tax another taxing district and be a cost-effective issue for taxpayers in the community, but they still choose to do that.
And then this, I think Kevin was talking about this or getting there. On 9.2, I've done some cell tower leases for clients, and the cell tower owner pays the increase in the property tax because the cell tower is there, okay?
Correct.
Now, in your case, I don't, if, if it's determined by the county or somebody that this ought to be taxed because there's, there's a for-profit solar field on school property, who's paying that?
So the district would be paying for that. We excluded property tax costs.
Okay, that could be big.
Pardon?
That could be very large number.
Well, that's the idea of why our approach is to gain early entry into the permitting, zoning, development considerations with each of our customer opportunities. And so we've already been in conversations with the applicable jurisdictions to start the conversation as to what would that look like. As Doug was saying, it's a relatively new process for many in Illinois, and so we're trying to get ahead of that and to provide numbers that we can stand behind for what the potential addition in, in property value and property tax implications would look like.
We may have a favorable determination now, but five, 10 years into the contract, there may be a change and we're stuck with that. Is that correct?
As the way the.
As the way the contract is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's specifically written that way.
Yeah, okay, I just want to know.
What one, the only parallel we could find at the moment is we do have a farmer who cash-farm rents the land, we get a, we get an annual payment, and they farm the land and gain value from that. I understand that there's a tax bill that does arrive at the school district, and it has $0 on it every year for what that's worth.
But that's, I think that's because the farming tax rate is really low.
Well, yeah, I, I have some churches that are exempt, but if they have a farmer on their land farming the crops, that changes it, and then it gets back on the tax rolls. And there is a, sometimes an appreciable tax bill, so I know that's a little different, but that's, you know, a school is tax exempt, a church is tax exempt, and I'm actually concerned about that issue. I think we really need to nail that down.
And it sounded like Mark's working on it.
Okay.
And then my next question was on Section 15.1 regarding confidentiality, given we're a public body. Not sure what that means or what that puts us on the hook for because we're talking about it now.
We've had a lot of legal review, that's one of the areas that our attorney beat up real bad, and we're, we're getting, this is following with a guidance of our legal team that, that, that if we're, if we're asked to produce information that's like this, we at that time should question and bring our partner and make them aware that we're being asked to produce this information.
Right, but I guess.
And if we would want to consider denying it, they would first have to explain to us why we should bother to.
I guess my concern was you have a contract here, it'll be public, the pricing is there, what else, kind of what else is there that we are saying we won't talk about?
Or is non-foilable, right? Ultimately, this becomes foilable as well, I would guess.
Well, I mean, that gets to what you were saying, but I'm saying what's left after you?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so I, I, I think it's a good faith effort to ensure that we provide enough information to engage the public, to make sure that everyone on the board can make an informed decision, but I think it's just a sensitivity to, that we operate as a business, and we, we want to ensure there's sensitivity around the pricing and legal negotiations for that particular process, but understanding that the pricing that we have ultimately presented as our best and final offer, the redline form of the agreement, it's, it's all up for consideration and anyone can access it.
Okay.
I think there is just the interplay of sensitivity between releasing all communications, all publications between our company and the board versus.
Just to give you a hypothetical, if you're saying, hey, our strategy or approach in these type of situations is XYZ, you're basically just saying XYZ is a private communication at that point, you know, something along those lines, is that a fair way to think about it?
Unless, unless there's a FOIA request, then it'll be.
Yeah, but like, we may, we may come to know during the installation some sort of proprietary equipment that they use that's better at getting the photons converted to electrons or whatever, and, and that would be something that.
A trade.
A trade secret that we would have to keep confidential.
Okay. And then I guess my last one, I think, although one small one, mention of sunlight easements, and probably more of a question for Doug and the administration in terms of, do we foresee any issues with the location of where these are and any type of future building needs that might, I never gave it a second thought about a sunlight easement, but it felt like an interesting term to draw some details out on.
Well, the, the Reed Road location is a location right now that we finalized, is that, you know, you've seen some preliminary versions and some plans that are different locations. This is the latest that we asked them to consider putting it here because it's between the buildings and the master plan of development, and it's always been not much of anything. If we would ever build a high school, I don't know how we could ever build a high school on that small a piece of property, but, you know, and a very old master plan, it showed one, and there would be athletic fields in some of that area.
To the bottom.
And we brush-cut that, we don't cut it down to nice manicure lawn because it's not really used.
Okay.
It's just there, and it's, it's in a condition from spoils of other construction that it's not conducive for farming, the farmer doesn't even farm it.
Okay.
In that, most of that area there. In the case of Square Barn Road, it's land, that there's a triangle of land behind the bus lot that's between Conley and McCaven, if you can picture that back there.
Yeah.
There's no master plan vision of anything going back there. And also, the other part of the Square Barn campus development would be right across the, our minor drive here off of Academic, right across our parking lot, closer to this building and not farther up, far removed from the neighbors. And once again, back when we, if, I remember if you were part of the process back in the day when we were going to extend Academic Drive north, and originally it was just a couple of straight lines on a drawing, and I said to the engineer, I said, what if we really do go with the old master plan and build a high school here? Which, again, it's a ridiculously small parcel.
Right.
I said, what would that have to look like? And they drew this little snakey curvy drive there like it is, but I don't see how we could ever build anything there, you know, of any consequence. And lastly, Harmony Road, of course, we know up in that front, Stormwater Detention Pond, we've got drives on both sides, we've got Harmony Road on one side, we've got a parking lot on the other end.
Right.
And we're pretty landlocked there, I don't know how there would ever be a sunlight issue there.
Fair enough.
And of course, there's a little bit that's on the table far over near us, west of the high school, south of Leguee, and it's been repositioned to be as far away as it practically can from the Del Webb neighbor, if you will.
Yeah.
And we do have some change in grade on the grounds there that, and we've tried already started a little planning there, but there's, there's no plans to develop anything over there, that's all just stockpile spoils.
And the one location that struck me as maybe not as intuitive to me was the one I saw on the Marlow diagram where it's kind of dead center of the property.
Well, that's where you said that's where all the spoils are.
I got you, okay.
And there's some grade changes and things there, it's not very practical, there's some major storm sewers underneath and things.
It's not a well-kept area, it's not overly useful.
And then my very last question is, how tall is the fence?
The fence should be a block chain link fence about seven feet high.
There will be, I was reminded by the village of Lake in the Hills, when we had the zoning review meeting for the Chesapeake Martin parking lot development, I became part of a little discussion that that's an evolving matter as to what the village ordinance is going to allow as well, that there'll be some interplay there that may tug at a little bit possibly on the answer to that question.
Our typical fencing height is about seven feet, but as Doug was saying, we want to make sure that we comply with all of the requirements of each jurisdiction to advance these projects through development, and so there could be some tweaks, there could be vegetative screens that are needed, but all of those have been bundled into the assumed development costs.
And then how tall do the panels sit again, I knew that answer at one point?
Yeah, so approximately eight to 10 feet.
Okay.
With the racking and the panel height.
Right, they're tilted usually on an angle, obviously towards the sun and all that, yeah.
Okay.
There was one comment, I, Doug, earlier you had mentioned some of the work that we had done to advance the project forward in parallel with contract negotiation, and so I oversee the interconnection process for Forefront Power, and so we were able to submit all of the applications into comments, so.
The level floor and the level two?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, that's a little investment they've made already to get ahead of this project.
So, yeah, so we're very excited about the opportunity, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
All right, any objection to moving this forward then? Okay.
Well, moving it forward as a general board item won't be a.
Right, not consent.
Yeah, okay.
But I still wanted to make sure it did come out of committee all the same.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you. Item 10 dot four, hand soap procurement.
I'm sorry, I hope it says paper products.
And paper.
Okay. At the school district, when we revised the model of custodial service, RFP responses, we elected to want to take control of the procurement of hand soap, yes, Paul, and, and paper products. Hand soap is, that is recognizable of a cost to the school district in the form we're getting, that procurement is already in process. But on the paper, it's, it's a bit of a larger expense. We do consume quite a bit of paper. At six to nine months, I tracked, I asked our partner who was buying it in the last contract to share a copy of their delivery receipts so I would get a feeling for consumption. And I solicited a couple of different manufacturers' products for us to test and touch and feel for a little while this spring, and we tested a GP, Georgia Pacific, and an SCA that's a Scott. I apologize, paper companies have been merging so often, I don't even know the new names half the time, but they're two very common consumed products this day and age. And we like the GP product, very nice performing, nice dispensers, the, and the good news is that I asked both vendors to provide a recognized cooperative discount pricing, which we can buy on according to ordinance, school code, and my. pricing, which we can buy on according to ordinance, school code. And I asked them to give us a price for a proprietary system because the other thing that we've had some bumps in the road is, I don't know why it's such a big deal sometimes to get dispensers. And they are kind of pricey when you buy them on a, on a spot basis, but if we find a partner we align with that, that we agree to buy their paper for a period of a certain term, they will give us dispensers at no additional charge. And they will install them, they will maintain them, they will replace them at no cost to the school district. And if we would buy the quantity we've got right now, it'd be a recognizable expense, about 50% of the cost of a year's consumption, darn near. So it's a recognizable amount. And I did find that the preferred product that we tested, the GP product, is in fact more price competitive than the alternative we tested. And they're both co-op prices, so I'd ask the board to consider approving our entering of this agreement on the paper products. I did ask about the escalation terms, and I will tell you that paper is a very volatile market and it's, it's hard to constrain them, but it's subject to review at any time and they're all, they're all like that to the best of my knowledge.
Any questions? Nope. Okay. Any objections with moving this forward then? All right, we'll go ahead and move that forward then. And that's it for building rounds tonight.
Okay, onto legislative. Just have a few things here. Unlike the last few years, I get to actually say that the governor signed a budget bill, so kind of excited about that.
Was it on time?
Yes, on time. And I think it's the first budget bill he signed.
It is.
On time.
Same does.
Yeah. So, how long's he been governor? Yeah, okay. They're, they are looking at TIF reform because TIF districts, while they could be good for economic development and other things, can really impact schools. And there's something, just something to kind of think about is, it's going to be out there. They're going to try and take a look at how that will impact the evidence-based funding formula and all that other stuff. So, this, this topic of TIF districts has come up in the last month more than I think it has in the last couple of years. So I think it's something that everybody's taking a good look at. The third thing is, as we talked about at the last meeting, Chairman Jack Franks, McHenry County Board Chairman, did have his meeting with the school districts this past week. Dr. Hawke, Dr. Rowe, and I attended on behalf of the school district. Was there about a dozen districts or so attended by their superintendents or their CFOs and their school board presidents as well. That's all I'll report on that, but I will open it up to either Dr. Rowe or Dr. Hawke if you want to add anything.
The, the tone of the meeting was different than what I anticipated. It was more of an effort to collaboratively problem solve. Unfortunately, I think it also showed the fact that perhaps the county board was a little bit naive as far as the operation of the school district. Lots of questions related to how we manage the budget and fund balances and things like that. So, I, I think it became more of an information sharing than developing any conclusions. Scott, anything you want to add?
I think the, the shocking thing for me was, the first question was, have you considered attempting to, to co-op your, your insurance? And I believe it was the McHenry Board President said, yeah, like 10 years ago. And everybody just nodded. So I, it really was, it was not contentious in any way. It was fact finding, but it was very clear that all the districts of McHenry County have been working for quite some time to be very responsible with their public funds and all are doing everything that they can. So Mr. Altmeier's report that he put together, Dr. Hawke shared with Mr. Franks, and it appeared as though he had not seen how inadequately funded the McHenry County schools are in unison, which his report showed that 71, we were 71% of adequacy as a collective group of schools in McHenry County. So that was eye-opening to him. So I think that a level of respect for what we've already done was, was earned. We'll see how he responds to the media.
And that's well said. The, the challenge, of course, is schools are receiving a much higher percentage of their funding from property taxes. The, the solutions, and, and the, and there's some things that are just fixed costs. You have to have staff, you have to properly pay your staff, and that's a large percentage of our budget. So there's really not as much wiggle room as, as I think that they thought going into this. The, the solutions are outside of our control sometimes. I mean, it's, I think, I really do think they're down in Springfield. They do have to look at this. We do have to change the tax base in McHenry County. There's way too much reliance on residential property taxes and not commercial, retail, and industrial that would really ease the burden quite a bit. And until that changes, and if that ever could change, I really don't see how we can get around this, it is a huge problem. I, I think it was very clear that every district said, look, we're all on board. We're, we're always looking for ways to try and do things, spend money wisely, spend only what we need to, and not put too much of a burden on all our taxpayers, all our stakeholders, not just the parents of, of students, but the people that live in the district and want good schools, want high education value in the county. So, I guess I did have something to say. All right. With that, I normally turn it over back to the president for Board of Education, but I guess that's me now. So let's go with 12.1, membership renewals with IASB and LUDA for 2018-19.
Thank, thank you very much. We have two annual membership dues that come due on July 1st. One is the Illinois Association of School Boards, a total of $11,963. Second is LUDA, Large Unit District Association, about $3,000. We're recommending that this be moved to the next meeting and seeking approval by the board.
Any questions on that?
Well, I don't have any questions. I'm just going to comment because it's, I'm not going to sidestep the fact that, you know, the Daily Herald's run a pretty significant article in the last month on, on school districts spending a lot of money on IASB. And I just want to make sure her, I mean, I, I see the value of it. I've always seen the value of it. I just want to make sure everybody else is on board if they've been reading the article. I mean, at U46, had several board members who voted against it and thought it could have been money spent on other things. I personally, you know, think we're, we already place a value on the educational items that we have. We fund those appropriately. This is another item that we decide as a board that it's important to belong to it. We get a lot of value out of it from the standpoint of, they, they act on our behalf down in Springfield quite a bit. We would, if we didn't belong to this and we had some issues down there, we'd have to hire people to go represent us. We'd be spending money that way. This way, we have an association that's down there on every matter, no matter how big or how small, always monitoring these issues, addressing these issues, besides all the other elements that they provide for us. So I just wanted to kind of speak strongly out towards the fact that, yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's 12 grand, it's not a small chunk of change, but it's, I, I value it. So just want to make sure everybody else felt that way.
Who else? Does that come to a dollar 12 a student or so? Yeah. One of the reasons we've been regarded as a high-functioning board is because of the training we get through. Illinois Association of School Boards, the information that they provide to us, the representation they give us down in Springfield. I, I think it's very, very good investment. I agree with Tony. And policy updates, everything. It's, it's-
It's a ton to get out of it.
It would cost us a lot more to try and get any of that through other means.
Yeah.
Same with LUDA. We are a large unit district and that carries with it its own unique concerns that sometimes isn't always addressed generally when you've got hundreds of school districts that have very different makeups. So that, that as well, for the same reasons. Okay, so we'll move that forward if there's, unless there's any objections. Okay. 12.2, Board of Education Minute Review. We have the minutes from the budget meeting from the 17th of May and the regular meeting from the 17th of May. Is there any additions or corrections to that? Otherwise, we can move that forward. Hearing none, that's great. Let's see. We don't have, we have minutes from the April 20th closed session. This is 12.3. Does anybody have any concerns about moving that forward at this time? Okay? Way too easy. We, now we have to establish our calendar for regular meetings for fiscal year 19. As in the past, we will do it on the first and third, Thursday of each month with the Committee of the Whole at the beginning and the board meeting on the third. But there are some changes, of course, so that we can attend the IIII Conference in November. There would be no board meeting at that time. Also, there's no meeting in January at all, right? Is it, or is that just? There's a regular meeting. I'm sorry, there's a January regular meeting, but there's no Committee of the Whole in January. So, does anybody have any comments or corrections or concerns with that calendar and moving it forward? Okey-dokey? All right. 12.5, Strategic Plan Indicators. Yeah, Dr. Hawke?
I've written a memo related to the Strategic Plan Indicators. One thing I've been very impressed with in the short time I've been here is how seriously the cabinet looks at and works on the strategic plan. This, again, not only the cabinet, but also those people in the buildings and, and working hard to make sure that they can fulfill the expectations of the Board of Education placed on them in August of 17. You see the attached plan and the indicators and whether it was successfully completed. The memo indicated that the district has completed 90% of their goals, which is at least the expectation that I have seen in other districts extremely, extremely high. So you will also find the areas in which we did not fulfill those expectations. We made progress. In one case, the only issue is the timing of the training. It is, has not yet occurred, thus we can't say that that goal on restorative practices has been fulfilled. We would like to just take questions rather than go through each of the indicators and the rationale for why we found that it had been successfully completed. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask myself or the cabinet.
Okay. Are there any questions related to this strategic plan outcomes? Give you a chance to kind of take a look at everything before we move on. I'm going to make a general comment that, having looked at this, this is, we, we really keep pushing the envelope on, on our goals. We don't want to make goals easy to attain, yet we don't want to make them so unreachable that they're pointless. And I think, I think this is, what we see in the results, the final evidence, is that, that everybody is, is working towards meeting them, exceeding them when we can. And of course, you did point out that some of these, just because of the timing, they haven't been met, but it's not that they failed. So, every, every year I see this, I'm, I'm impressed.
Clearly, everybody's rowing the boat in the same direction, making an effort to accomplish those expectations placed before them. So, again, real pleased with the effort on everyone's behalf. And again, I'm recommending that the merit that goes along with the completion of the goals be paid.
Okay. Very good. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. Very good. Thank you, Dr. Hawke. Okay, 12.6, Designation of Newspaper. I'll go back to you, Dr. Hawke.
The recommendation is the board to continue with the Daily Herald as the official newspaper. We would like to recommend action be taken at the next board meeting.
Does anybody have any concerns with that? Okay. No, any objections to putting that on the consent agenda?
No.
All right, now we move forward. Next item, 12.7, Board Vacancy. We have posted the vacancy announcement. Mr. Armstrong, that's been on the website, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that information did go out to the papers, I believe. So that is out there and we will be getting, hopefully getting some quality candidates to look at and interview, and then we will be seeking board approval on July 19th, which will be within the time specified in the policy and the statute to fill Mr. Dreszal's position. 12.8, Reorganization of the Board. Those references to statute and policy. The, just so you're aware, the policy is that when there's a vacancy of the president, the vice president assumes that role without further action. But then the vice president position needs to be opened up, which we will be doing at the next board meeting, taking nominations and voting. Dr. Hawke, am I missing anything on that?
That's, no. The one thing-
The July meeting or the June meeting?
It will be the July meeting because the posting-
Well, are we, we're talking about the board vacancy or the, I guess-
No, no, the reorganization. The reorganization would be the next meeting.
The next, because the agenda says the 19th of July.
Yeah. It would be the next meeting.
Okay.
But the finding a new board member, it has to be posted for 30 days after the resignation and, and Don's case, he attended a meeting after that, so we went five days after his last meeting.
Right. No, I understood that. It was the reorganization because the agenda says the July meeting. So that was, okay.
It would be the next meeting. It would be the June meeting.
Yeah, and that'll be, that'll be reflected in the posting for that agenda. Okay. If there's not anything else, then under 12.9, I will make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda.
I'll second.
There's a second by Mr. Troy. This is a roll call.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. We are in closed session at 7:43 PM. Thank you all.